Stand. You don't sign.
I signed already out down yesterday.
Which one?
Ashley's already signed. I think we got everybody.
Oh, there's seven of us now.
All right, so. All right.
Oh, Jesse.
Jesse has to sign.
Have you signed?
Test one two.
Yes, the chair. Oh. I don't know. I believe he's out of it. Oh, I get. I missed. I was in third. Thank. Believe. Okay. I called him back. I got a favor to ask. What? Want to run my wedding?
Oh, I did.
Said, you know, I'm getting. Oh, no.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular town council meeting and council chambers, and we are via Zoom. Um, can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bragdon. Counselor Danforth.
Here.
Chair Dumay.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Present.
Counselor Mador.
Here.
Counsel McGowan.
Here.
Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Thank you, everybody. If you'd please uncover and stand and recite. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there was an addition of order number two zero one dash two thousand twenty three.
Thank you. Can I have a? There are no approval for the minutes. Um, there are no special presentations. There is no manager's report. We will move right to order one ninety seven dash twenty twenty three. Counsel Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one ninety seven twenty twenty three. Execution for the town warrant for August tenth. Twenty twenty three. It is ordered that the town warrant for August tenth twenty twenty three. In the amount of forty six thousand four hundred and forty one dollars and thirty five cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel Mador. Any heavy hitters on this?
Sure. We have fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty eight dollars and nine cents for. Ascend Aviation Group. Which is fuel, jet fuel. Uh, Dead River, two thousand seven hundred and eighty one dollars and ninety two cents for diesel fuel. Twelve thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars for John D. or more. That must be a repair. And. Main Resource Recovery Association, three thousand thirty seven dollars, thirty eight cents for. Disposal, tire disposal. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Counsel Pelletier. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one ninety eight dash twenty twenty three. Counsel Bragdon, would you please read? I do mind skipping you. Counsel Pelletier, would you please read that again?
Certainly. Order number one ninety eight dash twenty twenty three. Providing for execution of wastewater warrant for August tenth twenty twenty three. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for August tenth twenty twenty three. In the amount of six thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars and thirty five cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel. Mador. Any, um, heavy hitters on that one?
Yes, uh, one thousand ten dollars for a creative digital imaging. It's a sewer bill postage. One thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars, cents, USA Blue Book. Wastewater. Pro, I guess, uh, R.
Thank you. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Counsel Bragdon, are you prepared?
No.
Order number one ninety nine dash twenty twenty three. Counsel. Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one ninety nine dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval to expend fifteen hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance for a donation to the Knights of Columbus. Whereas the Knights of Columbus has been working for several years to restore the monument at the Millinocket Cemetery. And whereas the project has taken much more money than it's expected to complete, and whereas the Knights are actively seeking donations to complete the restoration of said monument. It is ordered that fifteen hundred dollars, one thousand five hundred dollars be expended from the unassigned fund balance to help finish the restoration of the monument.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Danforth, seconded by Counsel Mador. Council discussion on the order, please. Counsel Bragdon.
I apologize. I'm still trying to get this figured out. Um, the Knights of Columbus are extremely grateful for the straw poll that we took. Um, I will be abstaining because I am a Knights of Columbus member, but I I do gratefully appreciate the donation. Um, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bragdon. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom? Back to the council. All those in favor? Six zero, one abstention. Order number. Two hundred dash twenty twenty three. Counsel Mador, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two hundred dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of an application. For vitular's license for Steve's Hot Dog Cart. Oval Food Unit. It is ordered the attached application for a vitular's license hereby approved for. Steve Moro. Four sixty seven Penobscot Avenue, Millinocket, doing business as Steve's Hot Dog Cart. MFU. Four six seven Penobscot Avenue, primary. And option one, two, or in three, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Mador, seconded by Counsel Higgins. Council discussion on the order. Counsel Mador.
Mr. Chairman, um, without getting into too much, I I did take the opportunity yesterday to go see Mr. Moro. And I looked over his, uh. I I first went down to the park to look at the options that were there that he had suggested. I fully support option one. I think it is the best way to go. Uh. And I talked with Mr. Moro about that. I also went to his home. I've seen the hot dog cart. It is. Really a nice piece of work. Everything's brand new in it. Uh, he's put a lot of money in the electrical plus. I've looked at the electrical situation for his house that he has. To be able to have, uh, the hot dog cart there on occasion at his home. Uh, I looked at the location that he wanted sit. I I see no problem with. Location. Does not block, uh, any line of sight traffic. It's four foot setback off sidewalk where he wants to put it. There's ample parking and I went around and took the time to talk to a few of his neighbors too. And none of them had an objection to it. Uh, I think it's a a good business society. Uh, I do have, and I've had some concerns I'd spoke to Mr. Moro about, and I do have something that I would like to amend this. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and amend that. Uh. Approval of option one pursuant to the installation of meter and pole. Paid for by the applicant. An approval of primary use. Once a positive written opinion is received from the code enforcement office. And I think those are, I think that would cover everything to this point. Uh. I realize that it is in an R one. Area. But I do believe that exemptions can be made. That I say thank.
Thank you, Counsel Mador. Any other counsel comment?
So did he make? Did you make a motion? Or are you just saying?
Not yet. I'm.
He's saying that he would like.
I would like.
So I think he's waiting for counsel feedback and then he'll. Make his amendment if. Counsel Pelletier.
As far as I know, we cannot. Go against zoning. Here. There's an appeals board for that. Uh, and I noticed in his, uh, application, he mentioned that his. Uh, residential. He thought it was commercially zoned. It's not. An R one zone. And. At the very least, should have that. Checked out with the CEO. And then if there's an appeal processing, he needs to go through that. I'm. Well, in favor of, uh, option one. Uh, there's some. Rules that, uh. We have another ordinance on. That, uh. Other businesses within a hundred feet of his would have to be. In approval of this as well. I'm sure he can take care of that. I don't think there'd be any issue there, but. Uh. As far as granting the license for option one, for now, that's fine. But as far as in the pines, that's a residential zone to go. The code enforcement officer.
Just for clarification, and I and I do agree with you. I just clarified, it's not in the pines. It's off in Penobscot Avenue on the corner law. So, um. Any other council comment? Counsel McGowan.
Thank you. Um, I too went over today to look at the cart. Mr. Moro was not home, but. That's okay. I did not call first, um, but I, um, it was open, so I just. Kind of took it upon myself to to go in and look. Hope that was okay. I assumed it was. It was open. Um. And I I was impressed with it, so, um. I'm very much in support of this. I think I think it's wonderful. Um, I agree that option one is is definitely the best option of the three. Um, but since we we were notified that it is a residential area, I would have to agree with Counselor Pelletier that. You would have to go through the code enforcement officer for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counsel comment? Counsel Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Moro, for the packet of information that you provided and the options and the pictures. That was very, very helpful. Um, and that you've passed and the knowledge that you've passed the state domain certificate, uh, certification that you're all set to go. Um, I've only had a chance to view your photos, but like Tammy, Counselor McGowan said, I'm sure it's very impressive. I too am in favor of option one, um, downtown and, um. And also, I I know Counselor Mador had mentioned, um, making amendment includes like your own electricity, installing your own pole for electricity. Um, I would, I would support that as well. Thank you.
Counsel Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say I'm in support of it. I'm not going to reiterate on everything else everyone else has said. Um, but I'm. Very much in support for businesses here in town.
Thank you, Counsel Higgins. Um, Counsel Bragdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, I have a question and a statement. I'll do the statement first. I I am totally fine with him doing it at his primary location, assuming that he goes through the proper proper channels to get that approved. If we pass the order as is or amended. Um, I get it can't go over the zoning ordinance or anything, but he could, like you said, get in a, uh, go to the amendment. Get an amendment for it. Get an appeal for it and have it pa- uh, have it pass that way. So could we still pass this order the way that it is or amended in Mike's case? And still have him do that?
Well, there's nothing in the order that allows it to be in. An R one zone.
So it could pass the way that it is as it stands.
It could be.
And if you try to start using R one zone, then it would be up to code enforcement officer to go and.
Okay, thank you.
Educate him.
Thank you. Okay, so I go ahead.
Yeah, with the amendment that I want to offer. Uh. We would be approving this order. And the approval for the primary use. Would only be after receiving a written, uh. Opinion from the code enforcement officer, which would have to be part of. Process, but he'll. So it's in what I want to do as far as amending this is concerned. So that, uh, this could move forward and done exponentially. Without having to go ahead and, uh. Come back to the council before. It's necessary. With that being said, oh, certainly go right ahead.
Just a clarifying question. So when you offer the amendment, you're going to take out the other options. The only. Thing in the amendment is going to be option one, which we, which is, thank you.
I'll speak on the amendment. There's no sense of me speaking twice. So go ahead and make your amendment.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer the following amendment. Uh. Approval of option one pursuant to the installation of meter and pole. Paid for by the applicant and approval of primary use. Once a positive written opinion is received from the CEO.
Second.
Motion's made by. Counsel Mador, seconded by Counsel Bragdon. Council discussion on the amendment? I will. Speak, um. I'm in favor of food carts. Um, I trust, I haven't seen this myself, but I trust that, um. The opinions of the other councils that have seen it, um. I personally. Don't care where it goes on his property, but I do care about following the zoning laws of Millinocket. So, um, I agree with the amendment. I think it will cover all the bases.
Okay.
Um. And I am supportive of it going in position number one. Um, as my other counselors as well. So with that, I will go down to the public. Speaking on the amendment. Seeing none via Zoom. Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor on the amendment? Seven zero. Back to the order as amended. Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public on the order as amended. Also seeing none. Via Zoom. Back to the council on order number two hundred as amended. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number two oh one dash twenty twenty three. Counsel Danforth, would you please read?
Order number two oh one dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of parking lot closures for events committee music in the bandstand. Whereas events committee is sponsoring music in the bandstand on the following dates and would like to close the park lot. The parking lot from five PM to eleven PM while the event, these events are taking place. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the following parking lot closures on the following dates. Friday, August eleventh. Friday, August twenty fifth, and Friday, September eighth.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Danforth, seconded by Counsel Higgins. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public? Oh, Counsel Mador.
I was just gonna say, yeah, it's my understanding that, uh. There will be a DJ at all three of these bands, bands. Uh, and, uh. I have no. No problem with closures, uh, parking lot closures for these times. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Mador. Uh, when I spoke to Tom about this, who put the. Suggested the order, this is just pretty much housekeeping that needed to be done, should have been done probably a week ago, but, um. Taking care of it now, and it takes care of all three dates that the. Guy that's doing the DJ, he will, um, discovers all them dates, so I'm in favor of it as well. Going down to the public? Seeing none via Zoom? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor of order number two oh one? Seven zero. Reports and communications. War Committee for August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three is Counsel Danforth and Counsel and Chair Dumay. Any chair committee reports? Counsel Pelletier.
The August second. Child review committee meeting was canceled. Due to. Number of members being missing. And our next meeting will be August sixteenth and be. Town manager's office at four thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pelletier. Any other counsel? Counsel Mador.
Just an update. For the sustainability, uh, waiting for the, uh, short term rentals for, uh, attorney. Back to me. Uh, I was on vacation last week. I notified. Counsel Attorney Bopain, I was out of town. I'm just waiting to be back to me. Go ahead and get. Yeah, I started the heat process and we'll be following. Go ahead and present. What the attorney's findings are, but that'll.
Thank you, Counsel Mador. Any other council committee? Reports. Seeing none, we're going to enter into the two minute public comment section of the meeting. If anybody has. Anything that they'd like to address with the council? Please do so now.
Uh, I just wanted to inform you on nomination papers if this would be a good opportunity to do so. So taken out right now for town council seat has been Gail Mack and. Jane Danforth and Louis Pelletier. First school has been Donald Raymond, and as of right now, none have been returned. So just a little update there for you guys. And to also put it out there, that nomination papers are available and need to be returned. Uh, September eighth. By the end of day. Thank you.
Two minute public comment. Anybody else? Stand and address yourself at the microphone, please, sir. You're thirty se- you're thirty seconds into it.
Fantastic.
I'm teasing.
All right, it was nice to see everybody. See you later, yeah. Uh, I just wanted to stop by, say, hey, how are you? How's your summer? Uh, Jonathan Bader, uh, three six nine Mass Avenue, Millinocket Main. Zero four four six two. Also, come on the park. I'll talk about that, though. All right, I brought a couple of pictures of the project at the house. The roof is completed. And the house has got out completely, so.
Would you please repeat, uh, little, little bit of backstory before for the councils that were not here when you were awarded that?
I was able to, uh. Obtain a house for the town taxes. It was, it was really a wonderful thing. For myself, my wife, my stepson. And us as a growing family here. Um. So, yeah, we got all the work done. That we discussed in, uh, January. It's all finished. Yeah, it look, and they've had, uh, so many people come by and say. How nice the place looks. And the neighborhood in the town. It's really wonderful. All the neighbors are super happy, um, and they are pretty. Pretty happy. I found a lot of mold in the house. And, uh, all their junk is now gone, so. I tried tipping the guy at the dump. He wouldn't take the tip. I was like, look, I'm, I feel bad. I mean, there's so many dump runs that were made. Uh, with all the garbage and wet clothes and. Uh, I brought a couple of pictures for you. Maybe we can get them displayed. Now let's show anything that looks like it's working, like work. Then not the finished one. Uh, yeah, so that's the basement. Uh, this whole room was completely filled with wet boxes. Um, I found ten pipes that burst in this room specifically. And had led to all the most of the mold damage that was such a concern. Uh, this room, yeah, that's underneath the garage. Um. That's where the oil tank is. This room was completely filled. Uh, eight feet high, full of stuff. It's disgusting. Now, what else we got? Let's see the other pictures. Oh, this is the upstairs. So this on the left side, that's where the bedrooms are. If you look at the house from the street. That's had some mold damage and that came down. Uh, and this room had, you know, musky smell. So we were able to get it all out of the house. Uh, and get an idea what really, how bad it really is. I personally seen worse mold than other places. It really wasn't that bad, but at least we can now repair the place. Um, see other pictures we got. I hear finished house. This was today.
Wonderful.
Um. Uh, so that's the new porch. I I ripped the old porch off, then a new porch on. Uh, the whole, um. Yeah, the whole. Done, really. It's beautiful. Um, trim's done.
Is that a new roof that's put on?
Yep, brand new. It was, uh. Boily and, um, the black roof that had. Uh, fried from the sun, as far as I understand. Um, and none of the, uh, wood was broken. It was all slats. None of that was rotted. So it's pretty impressive. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much.
And I personally, Mr. Bader, I've personally seen your property. I've drive by it quite a bit and I've I've actually visited it, and you've done a lot to the landscaping of it too as well. This picture does not do it justice, so.
I would say roughly fifty hours at least in the front lawn. Um, I've been pretty exhausted. And then. Yeah.
I, for one, am, uh. I'll just jump in and say I'm I'm proud of you. I'm proud of what you've done, uh, you and your family and everybody that's assisted you with this. I know you had a lot of doubters. And, um, this is one of those things. It's a, it's kind of a feel good moment, so. Thank you for all that you've done and continue to do with the property. And, uh, continue to do well.
Thank you for entrusting this to myself and my family, and it really means a lot to me, so.
Anybody else like to say anything? Counsel Bragdon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's not often. I I don't think it's ever happened in the three years that I've been here that we've given a property and they've come back and say this is what it looks like now. Um, so I I really appreciate this. This does not happen. Um, and knowing that we have a success story is extremely heartwarming. You saw how that night went.
Oh, yeah. It was like a dramatic TV show from like, uh, Channel Five.
Yeah, so it's very, it's very nice to see this after what we went through, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Counsel Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I agree with Counsel Bragdon, like watching a really bad thing of American Gladiators.
Yeah, total.
Uh, but I'm glad you got the property. I congratulate you, uh, Counsel. The chairman is absolutely right. As far as the landscaping is concerned, it is a hundred times better than it's been years, years. Uh, the roof looks good. Uh, you worked on it. More importantly. I like the idea that a young family has an opportunity to have a home in the town of Millinocket. Be able to raise a family and to be able to grow in it. And to make it their own. So congratulations. I'm glad and I'm glad the town. Took the time and effort to have the discussion. To make the investment. Not only you're making it in the home, we've made it in you. And I think it's paying off very well on both.
Thank you so much. Means a lot.
Counsel. Higgins?
I want to say congratulations to you and your family. I really appreciate the updates and it's good to see it. It's good to see how proud that you are of that house.
Yeah, I I couldn't get her to send me the picture. We had a group of around twenty five people come. Uh, from affiliate church affiliation from Massachusetts. Uh, and a gentleman between seventeen to twenty three. Came and just labored away. It was, it was like, it was a prayer answer. It's awesome. And we have a group picture. Maybe I can get it emailed when Mauda comes back. Shoot.
At the next two minute comment.
The next two minutes. I'm totally over, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Anybody else for a two minute public comment? Nope. Name and address, please.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one of our sons that, right, up and he's gone. I just wanted to say. I intentionally drive by that house every day. Um, there's other ways I could go from my home into town. I go by it because I'm so happy to see what it's doing.
I just talking, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Name and address, please.
Yes, John Raymond, two thirty six Highland Avenue. Uh, I just want to thank the council for supporting these. Hot dog cart. Uh, good to see that, uh, we're looking to move forward all the time and. The. Lot of the effort that went into this to get to this point. Uh, he's done a great job on it, and I know it'll be an asset to the community once he gets it up and running. Um. And, uh, I know a little bugs to work through, but we'll we'll all get through that. And also I want to get a little update on the trail going east of Millinocket. Uh, we. The trail has been completed. We haven't, as we. Some of you know, uh. We have an eighty foot bridge to put in. And the sad part about it, uh, the brook's only, you could spit across it. It's not that far, but because it's in a low area. And a hundred year flood plan. We got to build an eighty foot bridge. So. It first started out at two hundred and eighty thousand. We're down to about a hundred and eighty now. And, uh, then the. The land that, uh, King has proposed for the national monument. Just so happens that land. comes where our trail is, so we're in the process, uh, hopefully by the twenty-fifth of this month, there'll be signed an easement that this trail will be on and, uh, working with the Trust for Public Lands. And, uh, hopefully that will get signed, and that's been the holdup because with the sixty-two-page clerk permit, we have to have land owner permission, and we have to show we have the financing for the, for the bridge. So at the point, uh, right now, we have a hundred and five thousand of the hand on eighty. And there's a grant in with the, with the, uh, Penobscot County Commissioners TIF grant that's looking good that we're going to get approved for it. So we will have the money. Everything's starting to fall in place. We've asked them to possibly do a, a detour for this year so we could get the trail open. And I haven't received confirmation on that back, but if we do, we probably have to get it open in the next week or two. We just got to do some signage. And it will let us, allow us bypass the bridge for a little bit of time until we get it, so we won't have to be so pressured to get the bridge built right now. So it's because it's probably going to look the way it's been going by the time the permit comes in and everything. And then get working on it. We're probably going to be in the next spring getting the bridge finished, so. This way here, if we can, if, uh, Trust Department lands can give us on a, um, detour that we've asked for, might be able to get it open in the next couple of weeks, which will be huge, because people will start seeing a lot of the traffic coming through here because everybody's asking about it, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Raymond. Appreciate the update. Okay. Any other public comment? Name and address, please.
Brian?
Want me to go slow? Uh, Matt Bragden, ninety-two Lincoln Street, Millinocket. Um, I'm actually commenting for Bruce Rio on behalf of the Knights of Columbus. He apologized. He cannot be here tonight. He's in Searsport. Uh, but he says, I just want to thank you all for the donation and the support for the restoration. The three statues on the altar were major work. One statue will be tackled in, uh, next spring. The other two statues will be fully stored this year. Uh, the base and the crucifix look like cosmetic repairs that we'll continue to address on an annual basis. Uh, this year, we've poured, by the end of the year, we'll be at four to eight thousand dollars. We're looking at probably another two to five thousand dollars, uh, next year.
Well, thank Mr. Rio for his comment. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Ooh.
Motion made by Council Mador, seconded by Council Bragden. All those in favor? We are adjourned.